Good evening. Welcome to the East Hampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, October 20th, 2021. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast live via East Hampton Media on Charter Channel 193 and livestreamed on East Hampton Media's YouTube channel. As always, we thank East Hampton Media for bringing the meetings to the community. All councilors and participants in this meeting are gathered remotely by an executive order of Governor Baker, which has been extended to April of 2022, allowing us to do so. I remind both the members of the city council and of the public to remain on mute until recognized by the chair. Also, for members of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of the meeting unless you are participating in public speak or the public hearings. Thank you. This meeting is now called to order. Barbara?
Peg Coniff?
Here.
Salem Derby?
Present.
Erica Flood?
Here.
Omar Gomez?
Here.
JP Kozinski?
Here.
Tom Peak? Dan Rist? Okay, Dan Rist?
Here.
Lindsay Rothschild? Here. Owen Zaret?
Present.
All right, let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with justice for all.
Thank you. I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of October 6th.
So moved.
Taken.
Motion is second to approve the minutes. Barbara?
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Abstained due to absence.
Yep. Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Abstained, I wasn't there for the whole meeting.
And Owen Zaret?
Oh, yes.
Okay. All right. So now we are moving into public speak. For those who would like to participate in public speak on any topic other than what is in the public hearings, please remember that the city council may only listen to your comments, but we cannot respond. We ask that you remain respectful and direct your comments only to the city council. If you would like to speak, please select raise hand under the reactions option. Please remain on mute and keep your camera turned off until called upon. And before commenting, please state your name for the record, your address, or your precinct, or your town, if it is not East Hampton. I also want to just make a quick comment. There is a wild rumor going around that tonight we are voting to defund the police. That is very wrong, not happening, not going to happen. It's not what we're doing. So if you are commenting on that, feel free to go ahead and do that. Just know, not on the agenda, not taking a vote, it's not happening. Okay, now with that in mind, Natalie Gomez?
Hello, everybody. Natalie Gomez, Precinct 2. I wanted to talk about the, I want to speak out about what has happened at Eastworks Building. After the recent incident targeting a display honoring the victims of genocide at the Eastworks Building, we as a community should not stand silent against the systemic targeting of our BIPOC community. AKIND demands that the Eastwork Building Administration release the security footage of opening weekend of the event. There are two surveillance cameras located feet from the installation. City Council to demand an investigation to hold the antagonist responsible and for the city to make a public stance with actionable steps against systemic racism in East Hampton, which we all know it runs rampant in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mishu Olivera? I may have mispronounced that, I apologize.
You actually really well. My name is Mishu Olivera. I'm actually here also on behalf of my own story, but my fiance, who is anonymous, is also going to be speaking out regarding the same thing. I'm speaking about the antigenic plants and the need to deprioritize, decriminalize, and so forth. My story basically is that after several months of taking psychedelic mushrooms a few years ago, I was able to destroy a very massive addiction to alcohol that I'd had since I was 13, so 35-year addiction, during which I posted all of the story on social media to where now people, this is about two, three years ago, people are starting to follow me and come to me to do the same thing now. I had to open a business and I have clients that I'm helping with psychedelic medicine who acquire on their own and come to me for guidance and also integration afterwards. My partner would like to speak on her, on her behalf and her story of why we think that these plants and medicine should be decriminalized, basically. So.
Hello. I, I'm not going to give my name just because I'm a teacher in Connecticut. This is my 22nd year of teaching and I, I just can't, it's not legalized yet, but I did want to tell you my story. Ever since I started to take plant medicine, um, it is, I, I live in East Hampton.
We live in East.
For close to nine years. I, I just wanted to come on here and tell you guys that it's, it's completely changed my life professionally, personally, in all ways. I, I'm closer to people, I am able to, my anxiety is better, I am able to make decisions better, I am able to do my job better. I'm a department head at my school, so I have, I'm very, have a lot of seniority, and it has only made me better at my job and it's made me a better person. And I'm very straight-laced, I was raised in Connecticut, so I am, I'm not the poster child for this sort of thing, but it has worked and I just wanted to let you know that it's safe and I, I would, I would definitely, I would love that for other people to be able to do this in a safe and legal way without having to hide their faces or be anonymous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shelby and Donovan?
Uh, not sure if my video will work, but we'll.
We can hear you.
Um, okay, oh. Um, I want to start by addressing the recent incident targeting a display within the Eastworks Building honoring the victims of genocide. This act of blatant racism and hate needs to be followed with an investigation by the city immediately. And then I also have an additional sort of unrelated to that comment for the councilors in relation to, quote, "the youth in our community" and how the councilors consider them. And I would just like to suggest a reframing of the way we think about this group in council, but also as a community. Over the past, in ordinance meetings and in other subcommittees, I've heard the councilors and others speak about the youth in our community collectively, when a lot of the time it seems like they're really referring to young people roughly between 14 and 18, who have been in many ways carrying the brunt of the pandemic for our community as family and child caregivers in their homes and in essential service positions in some cases over the past year. The councilors tend to speak about this group of young individuals as if they are closer to a group of young children rather than young adults. As a community, I think we can benefit to rethink the way we see the younger members among us and have confidence in the bold, creative, and intelligent individuals that they are. And in addition to that idea regarding the decriminalization resolution, we have seen time and time again historically that prohibition does not create safety, it only creates lots of opportunities for misinformation as well as creating stigmas that prevent people, especially young people, from seeking out assistance when they needed the most. And age should not be a barrier to someone's health or safety or access to accurate information. This resolution is simply a statement with no legislative power, but it is an important message to our state and community about how we value equitable access to health and safety. If I had felt supported by my town when I was becoming a young adult, I can tell you with certainty that my journey to physical safety and mental health services during a time of crisis would have been a whole lot easier. Thank you.
Thank you. James Davis?
Thank you, Councilor Coniff. I am humbled to be here and appreciate you calling on me. I am not a resident of East Hampton, but I've got the opportunity to meet many East Hampton residents, helping with the decriminalization resolution. What I would just add is it's only a matter of time before these compounds are legalized, but it matters a lot to our communities how they are legalized. So in the past couple of weeks, we've been having high-level conversations with the sheriff of Suffolk County, with the Middlesex District Attorney of the other side of the state, and we want to continue those conversations with law enforcement and Hampden County as well. Because at the end of the day, there's a lot of suffering people who are passing away from opioid overdoses, but plants like ibogaine seem to be the most effective treatments known to man for helping people reset their addiction to opioids. It's extremely personal for me, having a brother that suffered, that's robbed our family, who has had kids out of wedlock because he is just out of control. And I'm proud to say that throughout Massachusetts, we're now administering safe treatments for opioid addiction and working with groups like Tapestry, Fenway Health, and others to make sure that people have access to these treatments without risk. I'll add too, it's also a matter of whether or not we're going to let Big Pharma monopolize some of these plants and charge cities like East Hampton nearly, you know, $1,500 a month for treatments, or, you know, $30 to $200 or free at the point of, uh, point of care for people who are in need. And so I am just extremely grateful and humbled by the leadership that Counselor Derby, Counselor Zaret, and Counselor Peak have shown in these conversations. And there's a lot of folks tonight who are afraid to testify, who professionally, they work as nurses, they work as teachers, they work in the community, and they're afraid and stigmatized to talk about how plant medicine has helped them. But I can assure you, it's going to help a lot of people, a lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Julie?
Hi, it's Julie from Precinct 1. I'm not sure if this is the open speak portion that I should wait or if I should wait until the safety portion, but I wanted to talk a little bit about the shrinking of the budget that Mayor LaChapelle said in an interview on October 6th, and it does align with the safety portion, so should I wait until then?
Um, probably, Julie, because we'll have a more open discussion at that time.
Great, thank you, I appreciate it.
Sure. Justin? Justin Marsh?
Hi, I'm just trying to get my video going, I'm sorry.
No worries.
Okay. And will it come on? No. No, it won't. Okay, I'm, I'm from Northampton, your neighbor, and I'm here about decriminalizing plant medicine. The science is showing that this is a really effective treatment for opioid use disorder, which has affected me in a personal way. I lost my older brother to an overdose, and I just think it's important that we have all the tools possible in our tool belt to treat opioid use disorder. To know it's a real problem, it's also being shown to be an effective treatment for depression, which is another epidemic at this point. As someone who's had depression myself, again, it's about, yeah, having, having tools to treat these, these problems, and this is shown to be effective. So thank you for considering this, I really appreciate it. That's all.
Thanks, Justin.
Yep.
Okay. Anyone else for public speak? Okay?
I would, I would love to publicly speak about decriminalize as well. So my name is Jane. Throughout my life, I've really suffered with a lot of depression. Like someone said earlier, I'm also a very straight-laced person, and I was really hesitant about trying psilocybin mushrooms back in 2018. A little bit of my background, my depression usually is, you know, related to existential thoughts and, you know, a lot of fears. And, and when I first used psilocybin mushrooms, I was able to really look at myself and look at my world from a new perspective and really learn a lot about myself and ways I can, you know, be more kind, be a better person, and really improve the outlook of, of myself and, and live a really moral and virtuous life. And, and since that, I've been able to integrate the experience I learned in that initial experience and I think really improved my own life. And I'm one of many. I know many people in my life have had similar experiences with these compounds, and I'd just like to share that they can be used safely. They have incredible therapeutic properties, and I'd really like to use to consider the decriminalization in East Hampton.
Anyone else for public speak?
Madam President, I don't know if you can see, but I see Stephen Bryla on my screen.
Yep, yep, I was just about to call on him. Go ahead, Stephen.
Hi, my name's Stephen Bryla. I recognize a lot of familiar faces here. We've all been working together for a while on this. I'm a business owner in East Hampton, and Jane just stated that some people in professional areas are like a bit nervous to say something. I, on the other hand, am like scared not to say anything with how important this is to me. A quick background, like I struggled for many years with alcohol addiction and, and partying and going down a wrong path, and through the use of psychedelic mushrooms with intentional care, I now no longer drink at all, and it's put me into a place of wanting to help others. And I love this community. I'm actually from Westfield, but I spend most days and nights in East Hampton, and I've gotten to know it very well. I think the city council is amazing. Mayor Nicole LaChapelle, I've gotten to know, amazing person. I'm so proud to be part of it, and I just can't say enough how much that I would not be part of this community, I would not be here helping to heal people if it wasn't for these substances. And you can freely go get alcohol, which ruined my life, strained my relationships with my family and friends, and I really don't know what else to say, but I just appreciate all of you so much, and I look forward with continuing to work with you, and I'm just, I'm just so much in fully support of this, I can't say enough, and I appreciate all of you, and I appreciate your courage. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Anyone else? Anyone see any hands up? Okay, thank you, everyone. Counselor Rist?
Madam President, move the public hearings to be opened.
Taken.
Motion is second to open the public hearings. Barbara?
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Public hearings are now open. First up, supplemental appropriation. Counselor Rist?
Thank you very much. We have before us a supplemental appropriation. The amount is $298,872. It's for a new ambulance. I want to compliment Chief Norris, who's here, and he will echo my comments. This was voted three to zero to approve it. This is coming from cannabis stabilization, and my first comment is to say that I feel this is an excellent use of cannabis stabilization, as it is very well-known that it should be used, the impact on public safety is there. We have $1,262,572 in cannabis stabilization. This is before any of the most recent appropriations. Subtracting this amount, we'll have $963,700 left, and Hader will correct me if I'm wrong, but that were the figures I got a couple of weeks ago. The other thing that's very important to note is by buying two ambulances at once, and just to remind the council, we approved a FEMA appropriation and a, a small amount from the city to do another ambulance. By buying two at once, Chief Norris is saving the city $30,000, and that's a, that's a good chunk of money. These ambulances are not cheap. The new ambulances, by the way, are all gas, which is a little cleaner than diesel. We're not close yet to having hybrids, but the chief might speak to that. The other thing that's important to note and is that all of the equipment in both ambulances will be used, and a very good point the chief made was that when we use all the same equipment, all the paramedics and EMTs use the same equipment. If we bought new equipment, we'd have different equipment in different ambulances, and I assume, and I'm sure it is, the equipment is still in good shape, so we're not buying any new equipment for these ambulances. This, and I'll let the chief speak more on it, but this replaces ambulance two, I believe he said, and we've had heavy maintenance on this ambulance, so we've been spending a lot of money trying to keep that on the road. There was some discussion about how the mileage runs up. One of the things he pointed out, there is West Hampton, but we do have only one major trauma center at Bay State Medical, and that's a, what is that, a 30-mile round trip or more? So Chief, why don't you expand on what I've said? Again, the Finance Committee approved this three to zero.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. Can you, can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you. When I started about a year and a half ago, we conducted a needs analysis, and part of that looked at the vehicles. And certainly what rose to the top of that needs analysis was the replacement of two ambulances. The city of East Hampton has three ambulances, they're all licensed to the paramedic level, and two of those three ambulances have over 100,000 miles on them. Obviously, these vehicles not only are used for life safety emergency responses, but they also bring a sizable amount of revenue back into the city, into their general fund. When I spoke to the Finance Committee about this last week, I talked about it's really reinvested in a life safety service provided to the community. In terms of the responses, what we're looking at lately is not only is the call volume going up, but the severity of calls are going up. And with that, as Counselor Rist kind of alluded to, that has increased some of our transports down to Bay State Medical Center. We're averaging down there, going down there about 275 times a year right now. That is the only Level 1 trauma center, our pediatric calls go down there based on state protocols. And then the other thing Counselor Rist referenced was a contract with West Hampton. We're averaging going out there around 90 times a year. So that's really kind of a quick, broad overview of the operations. What this will bring to the service, it'll provide some consistency and kind of dovetail on the grant that we received just two months ago, an amount of $275,000. And basically what we're doing is trying to leverage that grant funding to then piggyback off of that and minimize the cost of the second ambulance. And then going forward, the final thing is that grant, that will replace the 2010 ambulance that had a 2,000 patient compartment on the back of it that was remounted in 2010. This funding here is going to replace a 2013 ambulance, from what I've been told, prior to my tenure, actually had the engine blow on it the day that it was delivered. And then historically, talking with Dennis Ruth, the city motor repair individual who oversees all the maintenance, if he had his way, he would replace this one first based on the mechanical issues over the years with that, to the point where even prior to my tenure and even to today, that ambulance A2 is the last one out the door all the time based on those mechanical issues. So I'll pause right there and happy to answer any questions people may have.
Does anyone from the council have any questions of Chief Norris? Well, you might get off easy, Chief. Anyone from the public have anything to say on this topic? Okay, Counselor Rist? Oh, Counselor Gomez?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to make a comment. The comment is usually when we make this appropriation, came from free cash or, or the type of the account. So this is from cannabis, and this is what cannabis money is for, to buy this kind of equipment. And I'm really glad that we're using the money, buying the right equipment for the safety for the city.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Rist?
Okay, I'm going to make a supplemental appropriation request for the full council to approve. The amount requested is $298,872, to be transferred from the cannabis stabilization account, $298,872, to be transferred to the FY22 new ambulance account, $298,872. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: these funds will be used to purchase a new ambulance and replace a 2013 ambulance.
Taken.
Taken. Motion is second for a supplemental appropriation for a new ambulance. Any further discussion? Counselor Derby?
Yeah, Counselor Gomez kind of said what I am about to say, but I'm going to say it a little differently. I've been noticing a lot of appropriations lately from our cannabis fund, and I just want to, you know, acknowledge the fact that that, I think, is something that's doing some tangible good, and I would, I'm really happy that we're able to use that money in this way. I'm really happy, happy that we're able to get that money, and I would love to see a local tax option on alcohol, because I think we could do some really great stuff with that money as well. So just a comment.
Thank you, Counselor Derby. Mayor, we're in the middle of a vote, unfortunately, you won't be able to comment, I'm sorry. Counselor Flood?
I love that idea that Counselor Derby just threw out there, and I would support that wholeheartedly, I just want to say that. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Barbara?
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next up is a change to Chapter 7 in the City Ordinance Amendments for Personnel. Counselor Rist, is that you, or Counselor Gomez?
Counselor Gomez is going to take this, because I was not at the meeting where it was approved by the Finance Committee. Thank you, Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Counselor Rist. First, I want to start saying the Finance Committee approved this, two to zero, all of the two new positions and the change in paid grade. I'm going to start with the new position, adding a new Position Information Technology Director at a great age. This position is essential due to the rise of the technology needs due to the COVID-19 pandemic, is also essential to the formation of the city owns technology departments separate from the East Hampton School system. This position leads in the management of development of the city department information technology as well as the, the public safety. This position will start with the fiscal year 2023, and the high-end salary will be about $108,000 a year. And basically that's what I have, is a new position.
Okay. Anyone on the council have any questions? Anyone from the public have any comments? Okay, Counselor Gomez?
That was easy. I will make a motion to amend to Chapter 7, Section 717, Exhibit A, classification of employees by adding in the Position of Information Technology Director at great age.
Taken.
Motion and a second to amend Chapter 7, Section 717 for Information Technology Director. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Yes.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Yes.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Yes.
Erica Flood?
Yes.
Motion passes. Go ahead, there's a couple more, I guess.
Yes, two more. The second adding position to Chapter 7 is going to be Community Social Worker, and this is going to be on the, the Health Department, Health Director. This position is important for offering a resident access to services and information they may not otherwise be aware of. This position engaged with the city youth, adult, and families to build a positive and strong community. The Community Social Worker will be under the generous supervision of the Health Department and will act as additional resources to the public safety for serving the need and concern of residents. This will be working together and partnered with the new CSO that we, that we have in the public safety, and this will be funded with, I got it somewhere here, I'm pretty sure that was with FEMA money?
CARES and FEMA.
CARES and FEMA money, yep.
Any further discussion?
I'm sorry, I think this one is going to be with the ARPA money.
Which one are we doing right? Oh, the social worker, I'm sorry, you're right. I had the wrong paperwork up in front of me. ARPA. ARPA. Any comments from the public?
And I think we have the Health Director here, I don't know if you want to add something.
Is Bree here? Oh, hi, Bree.
Hi.
Do you have anything you'd like to add?
I would just add that this has been a goal of mine for quite some time. The ARPA money has just been a really great, it's kind of good timing for us to implement this, but there's a big need, not just in the Health Department, but throughout the community. So we have a lot of specific social agencies around East Hampton, Highland Valley, just it's mostly elders, and then the East Hampton Healthy Youth Coalition is youth. And this position will just be all encompassing of all of East Hampton, and I think that this position will be very busy, and I think it's very much needed in East Hampton.
Thank you. Counsel Gomez?
Madam President, I remember the Finance Committee, I asked the department head, Bree, the Health Director, about because this position, it will be working with the school and it's going to do school visit. I remember that I asked her if she contacted the school department to let them know that this is going to be part of the job description.
I have not yet talked with Allison, the superintendent. I know that the school contracts out for counseling services, but I think that if the school was welcoming to it, then we could definitely use this person. I don't think their primary job will be the schools, obviously, but we could self-encompass the schools as well.
Thank you.
Okay. And one last call for anyone from the public. Okay, Counsel Gomez?
I will make a motion to amend Chapter Seven, Section 717, Exhibit A, classification of employees by adding in the position of a Community Social Worker at grade F.
Motion second to amend Chapter Seven, Section 717 to add Community Social Worker at a grade F. Any further discussion? Barbara?
JP Kozinski?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And the last one, Madam President, is the changing the pay grade for the position of a Public Health Nurse. This is to create this position more competitive. And now with, we know that many people, East Hampton is one of those places employer, they need people to work and to be more competitive near our city. We need to increase the salary and be more competitive to attract, that's the word that I was looking before, to attract the right people for this kind of job. And the difference in pay is going to be from CARES and FEMA money. And I don't have anything else because basically it's for that, is to attract people that now we are no getting.
And I'll just piggyback onto that. I know I'm kind of a broken record, and I know you guys are sick of hearing about it, that I work at the vaccination clinics and there are some amazing nurses working at those clinics. And I'm in awe every time I spend a clinic with them. And I have tried to talk them into coming over to East Hampton as a public health nurse. And time and time again, they say, you guys don't pay enough. And so they, they are worth a lot. And so anything we can do, which is why I fully endorse this, anything we can do to entice the really, really good people to work here, especially now during these times, I'm all for it, especially in this role, because there are some amazing people who live in East Hampton, who are working in these clinics, and I'd love to get them to work as a public health nurse for us. So thank you, Bree, thank you, Mayor, for putting this forward. Any comments from any other counselors? Any comments from the public? Okay, Counsel Gomez?
I will make a motion to amend Chapter Seven, Section 717, Exhibit A, Classification of Employees by changing the pay grade for the position of Public Health Nurse from grade E to grade F.
Second.
Motion second to add a position of Public Health Nurse or change the pay grade from Public Health Nurse from grade E to grade F. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Motion passes. And that is that correct, Counsel Gomez? That's it for that? Okay. Next up is the City Council Public Safety Committee's report on the Mayor's Pledge. Counsel Gomez, before you start, Counsel Gomez, I again want to reiterate, this report was done by an advisory committee. It's non-binding, whatever the City Council votes tonight is non-binding. It is merely us saying to the mayor, we have done what you asked us to do. We went, we had public hearings on this report. We have, we are giving you what we believe to be the priorities out of those meetings, and the City Council is basically endorsing that. There is no defunding in there, there is no bindingness, if that's a word, about our vote. So I just want to throw that out there, Counsel Gomez.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, basically, this is a continuation of the public hearing from the last meeting. And I don't know if you want me to read everything again, at least the introduction, but basically is, you was really clear, this is just recommendations to the mayor, and the mayor will put in place what he believes we have to put in place in first or second or more priorities in our city to the police department.
Any other counselors? Counsel Rist?
I would just like the Chief Alberti to comment on it if he could. We did hear from an officer, I forget who was here last time, who mentioned that we had, the police have instituted a lot of the policies being recommended. And I had, I know he couldn't attend, and I just wanted to hear his comments. Thank you, Chief.
Good evening, counselors. I think, I would just reiterate what Sergeant Greby had said at the last meeting, that the vast majority of the recommendations in the Mayor's Pledge and the vast majority of the recommendations in the Public Safety document have been already addressed by the Police Department, many of them last year. We have policies in place, and a great deal of it came from the police reform bill in the newly formed Post Commission. I had the, I'm out at a mass chief's meeting in Norwood currently, so there's over 300 police chiefs, and they put us all in one room. And we've been doing our in-service training, but we had the, we had the privilege yesterday to be addressed by the Post Commission themselves. They were here. They did a presentation, and we had a Q and A with all the chiefs in the room. And I can tell you that the amount of money, it's going to be millions of dollars that the state's putting into this commission. It's, you know, the commission, the MPTC, and also the divisions of standards and training that are going to be underneath the Post Commission. So there's been a lot of work done in police reform in the Commonwealth and across the country, as we all know, over the past year and some change. So I'm confident that, you know, the things that we as police officers need and the community needs, and they need of us are going to be in place moving forward. So I'm pretty excited to work with the mayor, the mayor's office. But again, most of the stuff that is in the report, most of the stuff, the recommendations that are in the City Council, the Public Safety document, have already been addressed.
Thank you, Chief. Counsel Rothschild?
Hi, I just wanted to make a comment that it seems like we get, I get really frustrated after our meetings because I feel like we get locked into this conversation as like, are the police good or bad? And that's not what we're looking at here. That's not the question that we're asking. The question that we're asking is, and I just want to just remind everyone here, is how can we make sure to prevent implicit bias in our police force? And as we say in our report, it's not, it's not specific to policing. The schools are working on the same things, any institution when I was, that is working on the same things. Because in a country that lives, or we're still living in the aftermath of slavery and segregation, and this is just a reality of the society we live in, so I just, I came away from last meeting feeling like we're locked into the wrong conversation. That's not the question we're asking. We're asking, how is a community, can we ensure there's not implicit bias? How can we support our police in meeting the needs of, the public safety needs of our community? They're varied, they're not just about enforcement, they're about mental health and other things, and they're already making steps in that, in that way. So I just wanted to like, say that, because I came away from the last meeting feeling a little frustrated that we were getting locked into the wrong question.
Bob, I'll get to you in a second, I just want to see if there's any other counselors who have a comment? No, go ahead, I was going to say Counsel Alberti, go ahead, Chief.
Counsel, I don't think you want to trade jobs with me.
No, I'm good.
To Counsel Rothschild's point, I'd like to, I'd just like to add that having been with over 300 chiefs this week, I think it'll put everybody's mind at ease that we and 350 other communities in the Commonwealth are having the same discussions.
Thank you. Anything else from any counselor? Okay, and now anyone from the public who would like to make some comments on this report?
You have Emily.
Emily, okay, Emily, go ahead.
Hello, thank you. My name's Emily Rothwell, I live on Park Street in District Four. Yeah, I'm speaking tonight to give feedback on the Mayor's Pledge to reimagine policing and the recommendations that are put forth by the Public Safety Committee. I appreciate the effort by the working group to put together this document, and my biggest hope of it is that East Hampton will put into place structures of transparency and accountability for policing, as these structures are really essential for any city entity that seeks to serve the community. And as Counsel Rothschild just shared, the main goal, as I understand it, is how can we make sure that we avoid implicit bias in our police force? And accountability and transparency are really essential to this process. My main concern with the report as stands is that the revisions of the document include amendments especially proposed by Counselors Zaret that now include East Hampton Police Department in the activities rather than consider alternatives to any police department. I'm not targeting East Hampton Police Department specifically here. It's just any structure that's about accountability and transparency and reimagining is about thinking outside of what structures are already in place. So I won't go on, but for example, recommendation one suggests that there's one or more of the following three things happens: formalized partnerships of community and support options, built capacity of community-led peer support initiatives, and civilian mental health professional within EPD. While peer-led support are in that list, I'd really like to see that be more of a focus, and there's no concrete steps for how peer-led support will be part of the next steps. Likewise, CSO isn't peer-led, and having a mental health professional as part of EPD is further involving EPD in the process, where we're trying to reimagine policing and create structures of accountability. So as a community member, I just asked the City Council to move forward with this document into concrete steps that align with the mission of the document, as Counsel Rothschild has reminded us, and initiate a more thorough process such as what has been done in Northampton recently, and show that the East Hampton government is taking this process seriously beyond this initial pledge. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Shelby and Donovan?
Hello, my name is Donovan Lee, I'm a resident of District Four. And I, I'm speaking tonight to support passing the Mayor's Pledge without the proposed amendments. These amendments stand to increase public interaction with the police, give them more control over the reimagining process. I do not believe this is in the best interest of our community. This pledge has come due to a nationwide call to rethink the way we use police and public funds. I believe in the officers of the EPD participating in this process as individual community members, but do not believe in the department as a whole has much place in it. The East Hampton Police Department already seems to neglect accountability measures and general procedures they themselves have created, do not seem to be prepared or willing to take a hard look at the way they operate. Even things like weapons accountability and officer qualification records seem to fall by the wayside. I recently made a public records request to the East Hampton Police Department for weapon accountability and officer firearm qualification logs, that are referred to as being maintained by their own use of force policy. The East Hampton Police Department responded to this request that it would take 15 business days to find these records, and I would need to pay a $25 fee for the staff person's time used to find these records via Clifford and Kennedy LLP, a law firm based out of Pembroke, Massachusetts. After two appeals with the Secretary of State, I received these records. This process took several months, and I was first provided an incomplete log, the armorer's log of weapons, including firearms and, quote, less lethal weapons, a log the East Hampton Police Department has charged itself with keeping, was incomplete. To me, this shows that the East Hampton Police Department is just not ready to play a role in, quote, reimagining their department. Hope you keep this in mind when voting tonight and working with and around the department in the future. I would also like to acknowledge that the process used to create this pledge was flawed and could have been a little bit more thorough. And it is a starting point, though, and I'm sure me and many other people will be watching to see how East Hampton government goes from here. Thank you.
And we're going to raise our hands again so that I can speak.
Okay, go ahead, if you want to go ahead and do that. We're doing public speaking. Counsel Peak, I'll get to you after the public exhausts their thing. So Shelby and Donovan, if you want to go again?
Okay.
His hand is up.
Okay. I would like to urge the council, and specifically Counselors Zaret, to remove the amendments added to the Mayor's Pledge before moving forward. The amendments essentially give the police department a seat of control in the reimagining process of the department and fully contradict the main or central idea of the findings of the Mayor's Work Group, that the community should be responsible for the reimagining of the department, and that the department needs to be involved in less so they can focus on providing essential services. I want to point out that the language in the pledge does not in any way exclude the individual officers, especially those that are East Hampton residents, from participating in the reimagining process as individual members of the community, just like any other member of the community, their voice will be included. The idea that the department itself as an entity needs to be heavily enmeshed and in control of the process is not only counterintuitive to the idea of community reimagining, it's also a big red flag and indicator of the harmful ideology that currently operates the department. The department and its staff should want to be serving the community in the role that they have taken as government employees. They should not have reservations nor distrust in their community's ability to identify their own safety needs, especially when some of their staff members make up part of that same community. We're a community of diverse, intelligent individuals who have a wide skill set capable of developing functional procedures. It should seem objectionable to everyone that the police department would want to take on the additional responsibility of reimagining their department, spreading themselves thinner, and then be responsible for the resulting outcome when they are already responsible for the outcome and management of their department, which the community and the country in a national sense have identified a clear and systemic problem with. The mayor and the community have said that they will do this work for the police department and reimagine the department to function in a new way that serves its community efficiently and without undue burden on the department's employees. Instead, the police department is asking to insert themselves and succeeding into yet another process of creating and managing logistics and procedures that they're already struggling to do while trying to perform the duties they're already tasked with. Mayor LaChapelle has said that they believe the department needs to be tasked with less so that the, quote, "police" in East Hampton can police right now, and they're doing a whole bunch of other stuff, end quote. So let's not give them more responsibilities to take on. Lastly, I believe moving forward with these amendments included will only deepen the divide between the department and the community. These amendments fail to acknowledge the department's staff as individuals who are also valued members within the community. They don't need to be excluded as just the police department, where their individual voices are weakened, and the department as a unilateral entity will make decisions and choices to represent them as a group, but not as unique individual people who make different ideas.
That's three minutes. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else from the public? Okay, Counsel Peak, I saw your hand up earlier. Oh, sorry, Julie, go ahead. Sorry, it's Tom.
My apologies, I did it again.
My apologies. I did it again. I'm so sorry.
No worries, you're fine.
So I, I just kind of wanted to speak a little bit, um.
Can you just tell us where you live, Julie?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, I live in East Hampton, precinct one.
Okay, thanks.
Um, so I just wanted to touch upon the interview on October 6th by Mayor LaChapelle that she had on WWLP, as it more or less ties into the mayor's pledge. So I know that on October 6th, Mayor LaChapelle had went on WWLP, where she made, I believe, a unilateral decision to cut the police budget. So the mayor used the term shrinking, which is just basically another way of cutting. We talk about transparency all the time within our police department and in any government service. Um, I believe that this applies too to the mayor and the city council. I think that this decision, there was no community input. As a community member, I know that I myself and the others I talked to were completely blindsided by this announcement. And as a community as a whole in our police department, I think we deserve better. I'm not certain that city council members were aware of this decision prior to the city council meeting on October 6th, but can only assume so because another counselor who was not named in the interview was quoted. So first and foremost, I hope that this cut to the EPD can be reconsidered. I believe any cuts need to be discussed with the community input, perhaps discuss alternatives to funding. The mayor had stated, and I'm going to quote this from the article, that some of the possible measures include utilizing Westville State University Department of Criminal Justice to help keep police data, add in trauma counselors, social workers, and bilingual outreach workers to help respond to certain police calls and shrinking the police budget, end quote. I want to say that mental health, trauma counselors, and bilingual is a need across the board in all first responders. That includes the East Hampton Fire Department, EMTs, and are not specific to police emergencies. And as such, to provide these services, it should be a global service within the safety complex. And if shrink in a budget, as Mayor LaChapelle stated, then all responder services budgets should be looked at to minimize the impact to anyone budget. Or another option could be to use income from cannabis. And has, this has been utilized in other measures. And I think that that would be the best use for it. We all want continual improvement, but let us do what is right for the right reason, to build up and improve and not tear down under stereotypical assumptions of bias that the mayor and some council members have done. I support maintaining the police budget and adding to it if need be, as a cut should not be a punishment for providing much-needed mental health, bilingual, or trauma services. The mayor had ended her interview with the statement, this is not everybody, this is not about everyone being friends at the end. This is about everyone in the community, whichever one they want to be in, and not feel like they're being burdened of someone else's hate, racism, or bias. And I want to respond to that comment that the mayor made. That whole comment can only be assumed to be directed at the EPD. That was the famatory statement and mischaracterizes them. And I believe that they deserve an apology for that. And I just hope that everybody can come together and work together on this mayor's pledge for reimagining police, but not do it in a harmful way, but do it in a way that we can build it up and not tear it down. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Okay, Counselor Peak.
My point was, is sort of moot at this point.
Oh, sorry.
I, it was just a process question about whether we should be discussing amendments before any motions made.
Okay. Uh, Chief Alberta.
I just want to, uh, make one point, um, regarding the, uh, police reform legislation. So it's police reform legislation that is now a law. Uh, the Massachusetts Chiefs of Police, the major city chiefs, and I know the Mass Police Association all had significant input with the legislatures. Um, I particularly sit on the Mass Chiefs Legislative Committee, and we had significant input into the police reform bill. So I think it, I think it's worth saying that police reform, if you're going to reform the police, the police clearly stayed agreed as they took our input and we worked with them. Uh, I think it's worth saying that the police should be and are involved at the state level in police reform. It is police reform. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Um, I, I, I'm gonna make a comment, um, for good or for bad. Um, I, I heard the mayor's interview, and first I want to say that the mayor cannot unilaterally change the budget without the approval of city council, nor do I believe, I could be wrong, and mayor, I'll give you an opportunity to weigh in, that that was something that was on the table, but you, you can weigh in. I think this is something we discuss at each annual, um, budget hearing in May and June. And, um, we do this annually. The mayor will put forth her budget, and then it goes through a number of hearings. And, uh, I don't believe, but, um, I could be wrong, that, uh, in the middle of a fiscal year without us being involved, that unilaterally the police budget could be cut, and maybe one of my fellow counselors can correct me on that. Counselor Rist?
Uh, you are correct, and I don't believe that was the point of the mayor's, uh, before mayor's, uh, discussion. I'd like to hear from her on this because it is important that the record be set straight, uh, before I comment further.
Mayor, would you like to make a comment regarding, uh, that interview? And the, the meaning behind your words?
Uh, yeah, so the, the, first, uh, the words that made the interview, i.e. the edits, are not under my control. Two, you're correct. You can't, a mayor can't unilaterally cut a budget or change a budget, or for that matter, add to the budget without a public hearing and a hearing on the finance committee level as well as the city council vote. There are these two opportunities there for the public to weigh in. As far as, um, shrinking or, or cut, the, my interview referred to actually a concept that I've talked a lot about with budgeting for fiscal year 23 that starts July 1st of 2022, is shrinking different departments' budgets not by taking away from the budget and services, but consolidating those services in departments with specific expertise, such as, uh, the data reporting center and the overall cybersecurity of all of our departments into one department, the IT department. And that every department head would be working with IT around the individual software they need as well as tasks, including, uh, data points that were recommended in the mayor's pledge by the post commission and by the city council's review of the mayor's pledge.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, Counselor Rist, back to you.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I do want to reiterate what the mayor said. She is reimagining, to use that term again, budgets in all departments. And I don't believe she would ever, at this point, present a budget which would end up reducing the police force. As she said, she's adding different, uh, levels of new services. And how that's achieved, I'm sure she will let us know when the budget comes around next May. But any reduction in force would lead to a reduction in response time, a reduction in officers on the beat. And we don't have to have that to have police reform. I strongly support police reform at the state level, and I, I support the Public Safety Committee's work and the mayor's pledge group's work. But reducing the police budget isn't necessary to achieve those reforms to the point where we don't have as many officers on the street. And I say this because evil's still out there. I know for a fact that domestic violence has risen, and a reduction in, say, five minutes of response time may end up, unfortunately, domestic violence leads to many women getting assaulted, may end up in a life or death situation for that particular domestic assault. So I am absolutely in favor of maintaining our force. As for the report itself, I'm in favor of it, but I want to point out that institutional racism exists in all our departments, if it does, and that we, and I know the mayor, will work hard to remove systemic racism in any department where it exists. So I thank, uh, the mayor's pledge group and the Public Safety Committee for presenting this. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you. Counselor Flood. You're on mute, Erica.
This is a tough one where I just, I have to speak my heart, and I'm not going to be as, um, you know, Counselor Rist had a lot of very wise words and very eloquent about the way he spoke. But I also agree, reducing the budget, reducing our force, I don't believe that that's going to do any good to our community. I think that we have an amazing police force here in East Hampton. I think we have a community policing model that works. I've seen it in action in my own neighborhood. Unfortunately, I see these guys here, and ladies, ladies and gentlemen, in my particular neighborhood a lot, because we have a lot of families that are under a lot of stress. And sometimes that plays out by means of substance abuse and domestic violence. And reducing that police force and taking away resources is not going to help those families who rely on them to show up. Um, I understand the concerns, and I, I understand, I, I believe that myself, I would love to see more data, so I support more data collection in any way we can get there. Because in order for me to understand what other people are experiencing, I need to see those data points. But I also feel that sometimes the larger national political conversation gets picked up here locally, and we forget what we have. I have friends across this country whose husbands and wives serve on police forces, and it's a very different situation that they face every day. Some of those families don't know if their spouses are coming home. And that's the same thing for our, our officers who serve. You don't know what that call is going to bring. And I think that I just, I would like to say that I appreciate what we have here in East Hampton. There's always going to be room for improvement, but I, I, I hope that we don't undervalue the safe, the safe community we live in. I, I can allow my 13-year-old to walk to Mount Tom Ice Cream, and I know she's coming home. That's not the same in every community. So I just, this is just me putting my heart out there and saying, we're all trying, and I hope that all of us can understand, yes, there's always room for improvement, but we really have to appreciate what we have. And so I support more data collection. I don't support reducing funding because I don't think that's going to help. Uh, adding this community social worker is a really great step forward. The sooner the better. Thank you for my time.
Thank you, Counselor Flood. Uh, Counselor Peak?
All right, I'll try and say this well. So there was a community concern that part of what we were going to be talking about tonight was going to be about reducing the police budget. And I think it was important that we address that. At the same time, the reason we have the open meeting laws that we have is to make it so that we are only discussing the things that are actually on our agenda. There is no discussion of a budgetary amendment on our agenda. I think we've made it clear that we are not going to be taking any vote tonight that will affect the budget. And to that end, I think that at this point, we've all made our point, and we should move on from any discussion of the budget because we're not, there's no plan to amend it. And any discussion of what we should or should not change in the police budget is a conversation that should be had at such time as it's on the agenda, which it isn't right now. But I appreciate everyone's comments. I just think it's time to move on.
Okay, I, I probably, I, I technically and respectfully disagree, but, um, I, I do agree that we can probably move on from that topic. But in the realm of the mayor's pledge, do the, within the, within the confines of that report, does anyone have any other further commentary on that from the, I know that there's a couple of members of the public, but does any other further city employees or city counselors have any further comments? Okay, I'm going to give the public one last shot, and then we will go into our motion. Megan?
Hi, um, thanks for having, hosting this meeting. I'm Megan Fowler. I am a resident in East Hampton in District Two. So I just wanted to point out some inconsistencies in, in how long people were able to speak. Um, I did, I did notice Shelby was cut off like right at three minutes, whereas other people had, um, more time to speak. Just wanted to point that out. But I did also want to comment on, um, sort of just my thoughts and having listened to this conversation and read the report. I would urge you to think really strongly about, um, preventative safety, and, and I, I don't believe that policing, um, as we know it, does that. I think, um, again, reiterating what some other people have already said, uh, peer-led initiatives. I think we need to look at, um, independent organizations, um, or entities with similar authority to the police department who can help keep that accountability level real. I don't think positions of power are able to keep themselves accountable in the way that we really need them to. Um, and I think, you know, this is complicated stuff, and I appreciate having this, this conversation. I don't have, uh, anything else more, I think, add, but I, I do, um, I guess just back to process, um, as you were moving forward with this, I think, um, other people have touched on this from both perspectives of thinking through how you're really going to engage the community. I don't think, it, it's tough, and I know it is, and I know it's hard to have this discussion in public, but it's felt, um, hostile in some ways, and, um, like we're missing a lot of voices in other ways, too. So, um, just want to encourage the, the council to continue this conversation beyond this, and I, um, yeah. Thank you for, thank you for hearing me.
Okay, thank you, Megan. Uh, Liz?
Hi, I'm Liz. I'm living East Hampton in Ward Three. Uh, just, uh, thought after listening to this discussion, right now, uh, Black Americans are incarcerated in state prisons at nearly five times the rate of white Americans. As a woman who is a survivor of domestic assault, I don't really appreciate being used as a tool to like hide behind to continue on with this systematic racism. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, don't see anyone else. Does anyone from the public have any, I mean, I'm sorry, from the council have any last words? Mayor, do you have anything you'd like to add before we move to a motion?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right. Uh, Counselor Gomez?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I just want to make a few last comments is the, uh, the public safety. We took this really seriously. We listen to everybody, uh, from a different perspective, and we hear them. And I think the Public Safety Committee do a really good job, uh, putting all that information and opinions and concerns in this report. I'm glad that the police department is, um, working in most of the recommendation. But like the chief said, uh, it's, it's most of the recommendation, not all the recommendations. And I think this is what is really important for us to send it to the mayor and start working with all recommendations. Being saying that, I will make a motion to send, uh, to the mayor to recommend action based on the, um, mayor's pledge to reimagine policing work group submitted by the Public Safety Committee of the East Hampton City Council.
Motion is second to send back to the mayor the Public Safety Committee's report on the mayor's pledge. Any further discussion? Counselor Zaret?
Thank you, President Kauf. Just a few comments. I want to reiterate my appreciation for the work that went into these recommendations by the Public Safety Committee, taking time to sit through many meetings, listening to a lot of input, consolidating and synthesizing this into recommendations. This is a wonderful discussion around reimagining policing in our community, and I appreciate the use of that term specifically, looking to make our department a 21st century department. We need more data. We need more transparency. We need ongoing better accountability, better data collection analysis. We need a police force that understands what systemic racism is and a community that has an open channel to talk to their police department. to talk to their police department. We know that we're not really voting on policy here, so that's an important distinction I want to make and other people have made. We're affirming the work done by our colleagues to send some suggestions to the mayor for the mayor to work on. Many of the suggestions, as we already know, are incredibly intriguing and interesting. They're addressed by the post commission, as many people have noted here, including the chief and the other state legislature. There's other suggestions that might get added in by the mayor based on her own research and insight, and others may be removed or edited. In other words, this is a fluid, dynamic process still after tonight. This is just a handoff to the executive branch. So apropos of that, has been mentioned here quite a few times by the public. I put together a couple of suggested amendments or additions. But in the interest of the lack of finality of the process, I don't see a reason to burn the council with delivering ideas that I can certainly just reach out to the mayor and send to them. And the mayor can either consider or not consider them. I think that asking our police department to engage the public and reduce barriers, both existing and perceived, and offered some inside glimpses in how they work is helpful to all of our residents, whether they feel positive or negatively about our police department. Finding ways to engage our residents that drive process builds the public, brings the public more into the conversation and drives engagement. This isn't about removing the police department's role in community engagement. It's about giving the community more voice in their engagement. We're trying to build bridges. We're not trying to build more divide. How are we building any sort of relationship by punishing the police, by removing their role in this discussion? They're the professionals with the actual knowledge of their profession and their, how their department functions. We all know that this process has been fraught with polarization. This community feels fractured, certainly in these discussions and many others, when we need to come together. I think the important thing to hear is to continue to have productive discussions. But anyone participating in those conversations needs to be invested in dialogue. We can disagree, but we need to have a vested interest in people working together regardless of views. I believe that we need to build ways for people to work together here. I'm wrapping up here, President. The goal here is improving our police department's policies and practice. We want a department that itself is both diverse and also understanding of diversity. We want a department that has zero tolerance for intolerance and is aware of potential biases that may exist and how to navigate them. We are simply offering tools to make them better, suggestions that we would offer to any other municipal colleague or department to improve the already quality and forward-thinking of what the work that they are doing. This isn't a gotcha moment for the PD to uncover faults or bad behavior, nor is it a statement that they were about to approach. This report is constructive, not destructive. It acknowledges the collaborative intentions of the police department, opens some discussion about how we can engage the community more with understanding and discussing policy, looking to improve our transparency and accountability. We're looking to, we're not looking to replace one system of perceived dominance or of dominance with another system of dominance, dominance, just counterproductive. I'm voting yes tonight. I plan, which I plan to do, we're offering input to our municipal colleagues to keep on doing a good job because that's what they're doing. We're offering them more tools to consider moving forward and to modernize how we're doing policing here. It's no more, no less. I really appreciate the work and the discussion here by the council, the mayor, the police department, the engaged public. And I'm excited to see where this goes and the opportunities to optimize the way our departments run. So at this time, I will not put forward my amendments, President. If someone is interested, that's fine. But I think we've discussed this enough. And as we've all indicated, this is non-binding. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Counselor Rothschild.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to add because, you know, we have been, I feel like we've been tiptoeing around our police department because we just, we don't want them to feel criticized. And I'm not here to criticize them. But at the same time, I do want to lift the voices of the people of color in our community, people who do feel alienated for one reason or another from police, whether it's because of personal interactions with our police or other police. And I just want to say that I see you. I know that, that there's still a lot of work to do, that your voices are important and that community-led and that interaction needs to be community-led in terms, to build trust. And education is two ways. It's not just the department teaching you about what they do. It's about you teaching about who you are and what concerns you. So I just want to let you know that I see you and I hear you and I'm, there's a lot of work to do.
Thank you, Counselor Rothschild. Anyone else before we take a vote? Okay, Barbara?
Okay, can I just clarify? This goes back, I'm sorry. Who made this second? Does anybody recall who made this?
I do.
Okay.
And Counselor Flood.
Oh, well, I'll, I'll.
Pick one.
Pick one, yeah. Okay. Are we ready?
Yes.
Okay, Dan Rist?
Yes.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Yes.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Yes.
Erica Flood?
Yes.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
Madam President, move the public hearings be closed.
Second.
Motion is second to close the public hearings. Any further discussion? Barbara.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Yes.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Yes.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Okay, public hearings are now closed. Moving on to, does anyone need a break? No. Okay. Moving on to communications from elected officials, boards, and committees. Anyone? Not seeing anything. Correspondence announcements and president and vice president communications. I have nothing. Counselor Rist, do you have anything? No? Okay. Mayor Communications, Mayor LaChapelle.
None.
Okay. We'll do reports of standing committees. First up is Finance, Counselor Rist.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee met last week and voted to approve three to zero all of the items on our agenda. We do have public hearings scheduled for all the items that are listed at our next meeting. We will have a meeting next week to discuss the assessors' recommendations as to our.
Reclassification.
Reclassification. I'm sorry, I'm distracted. Reclassifications and the split rate. I invite councilors to come. Randy Austin, our assessor, will be there to go over them. I did send along his letter today, which is basically a duplication of what we always get. And also, Randy is going to provide us and at the next meeting, when we vote on this, a PowerPoint presentation. And I look forward to that. So we will have a meeting next week at 5:00 just to discuss. The only thing on that agenda, amazingly, is the classification. So thank you, Madam President. That concludes.
And just to reiterate for the public, that meeting will be on the 27th at 5:00 p.m.?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, Public Safety, Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, Madam President. We have met last night and we briefly talked about the South Street, Main Street sidewalk, just was briefly because in this package is, it was a request of, of an easement to repair that section. We decided last night to keep it on the agenda until that were being done and we can keep talking about it. And we didn't schedule any meeting yet. We're still working on it and that concludes.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Gomez. Appointments, Counselor Rothschild.
Hello, can you move on a second? You've got another committee, come back to me.
Sure. Ordinance, Counsel Derby.
Thank you, Madam President. So ordinance met on Tuesday, last Tuesday. And we were able to come to some resolution on the straw piece of the plastic ordinance. But I am seeing that we have, in the new business, we have some wording changes on how the variance process would work. So I'm just wondering, I guess I'll ask what the president's preference is. Would you like for us to just keep those together and bring, set the public hearing for both of those at the same time?
Yes, and yes, I'd like, I would like that. And I would, I could also ask, has this been vetted with the lawyer?
The new piece?
Yeah.
I haven't specific, well, you know that I haven't requested it from you, so the answer is no.
It was a loaded question.
It was a loaded question, but I got you. So, no, we haven't vetted this piece. I, you know, at the end of the day, I, I guess I'll leave, I'll leave that decision to you. My opinion as the chair is that it probably does not need vetting, as my personal opinion, as the wording closely matches wording from other cities that has been vetted, for example, like New York City, that has been vetted thoroughly. So it's up to you. I'm happy, I'm happy to, you know, have you make that decision. But that's my two cents.
And is the version that we have in the packet from Counselors Zaret, the final version, and that's what will go forward for a public hearing?
I believe it is. Counselor Zaret, is, is that the, our final amended version that was in the packet?
It is. And, I mean, we already kind of had legal review on this the first time around. In terms of the variance, that's consistent with language that is already exists for the health department.
It's really just a question of legal or not. We don't need to go into it right this second. If, if you guys are confident, I'll review it again just to double check. But, you know, I'm not saying we need to. I just was asking.
Yep, no problem. That's not a problem. It's a good ask. Because I didn't, I did not approach you and ask for it.
It only took me, what, 22 months to have a good ask? So that's.
There you go. No, no, you've had many. But, and so I do, I did notice on our agenda that we have a couple of items that are expiring on November 2nd, which I believe is going to be before our next meeting. So, and let me just tell you what those two items are. Those two items are the Juneteenth Resolution and Affordable Housing and Smart Growth District and Planned Residential Developments. So I would like to make a motion to extend those both for 90 days, please.
Second.
Motion is second to extend the Juneteenth Resolution and the Affordable Housing zoning amendment by 90 days. Any further discussion? Barbara.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Okay, so those have been extended. Just circling back, Counsel Derby, did you want to set a public hearing for the straw ordinance?
Yeah, I, I think it would probably make sense for, I would love to do that. And I think it would probably make sense for the second meeting in November, if that pleases the president.
Okay, 17, November 17.
And, and so I guess I would like to make a motion to set a public hearing on November 17th for the completed plastics amendments.
Second.
Second.
Motion is second to set a public hearing for the straw amendment. Any further discussion? To November 17th. Barbara.
Okay, and, and we'll know whether there's changes to what Owen put forward.
As of right now, it is what it is. It's the final version. If it changes, they'll have to let us know.
Okay, Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Yes.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
That's great. And I just, I would love to give a quick update on where we've gone with the overlay district for smart growth and affordable housing. So we've been meeting and talking about that with the city planner. One of the really interesting pieces of this is looking at potentially extending areas where that overlay district could go to. And about, I think it was around 2009, we'd originally, when we first looked at 40R, which is this overlay district, we had included the highway business area. And for reasons I can't exactly remember because that was a really long time ago, we left it out. But it is something that we are looking at again. And so we are going to review this one more time with the planner. And then we're going to bring this back to the council and move it to the planning board so we can start those joint public hearings. I just wanted to give an update on that. And so we did set a time for our next meeting, which is November, not November, October 27th at 7:00 p.m. So I just wanted to let everybody know about that.
Okay.
And I believe that concludes.
All right, thank you, Counsel Derby. We'll circle back to Counsel Rothschild. Are you ready?
I am, thank you. So we had five people that we vetted at our last meeting. So there was Steve Litwin to the Zoning Board of Appeals. He's been an alternate on the board, so now he's stepping up to be a full member. And you just saw his name in the last meeting because he's also just joined, what was the other committee?
Board of Public Works.
Board of Public Works, thank you. So he's retired. His name is, he's affectionately called Safety Steve. So if you call, see him, Safety Steve. And so he's stepping up to be very engaged in the city. There was also Laura Fisher, who is going to be joining, we're going to be recommending to join the Agricultural Commission as an alternate. She has, she's from East Hampton originally, but went away, went back, and her family had a family farm here. And so she knows, and she's an attorney. And she's really passionate about agriculture. And I guess she was one of the founders of the Community Farm, Community Gardens on Park Street. So it was, she was really interesting to hear from, and I think she's going to be a great asset on that commission. Then Sherri Simon sent us an email and she's looking to join the Affordable Fair Housing Partnership. She is an adult educator. She's worked with marginalized populations in St. Louis and here. And she is looking forward to working on affordable fair housing in East Hampton. So those were the three committee board people. Then we got the opportunity to speak with BJ Church, who is, who has been appointed as the Building Commissioner. She's full-time, right? She's, she, our new Building Commissioner. So she has a lot of experience. She's the Building Commissioner for like five small towns. And she's like really tired of driving around. And I, and has a lot of experience. So I think she's looking forward to being here with us. And she was here with us in the past under, and Cindy Terrell, we didn't get to talk to her. She's a new council on aging director, but we did review her resume and are pretty excited about the skills that she's bringing to our city as well. So I think she's going to be a great, a great asset to the council on aging. And I do look forward to meeting her. So if further ado, I will do three, the first three together. I move to confirm the following mayoral appointments. Steve Litwin to the Board, Zoning Board of Appeals with term expiration 12/31/2021. Laura Fisher is an alternate to the Agricultural Commission with a term expiration 12/31/2022. And Sherri Simon is a member of the Affordable Fair Housing partnership with a term expiration 12/31/2022.
Second, the motion?
Motion is second for the approval of the aforementioned three appointments. Any further discussion? Counselors Zaret.
I just want to speak really quickly, positively, to the appointment of Laura Fisher. She has, as Counsel Rothschild indicated, she has a variety of facets that qualify her to be on this commission, both in terms of she herself being a farmer, having farming in the family, being involved with the community gardens, and her experience as a lawyer. Had the opportunity to meet her over the last few months and discuss a number of agriculturally related items that really excite me for the future of East Hampton. So enthusiastically support her nomination, hopefully confirmation.
Okay. Any further? Nope. Barbara.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Yeah, and I will move to confirm the following mayoral appointments. Cindy Terrell as the Council on Aging Director with a term expiration 10/06/2023, and BJ Church as Building Commissioner with a term expiration 10/06/2023.
Did I hear a second?
Second.
Motion is second to confirm the Council on Aging Director and the Building Commissioner. Any further discussion? Barbara.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, unless I missed any in the packet, we don't have any appointments to move. So I won't announce a meeting at this time. And thus concludes.
Thank you. We did that, we did that. Property, Counselors Zaret.
Thank you, President Coniff. We met. Thank you, President Coniff. We met to discuss the electric utility easements relative to the tower at 32 Pason Avenue. For some reason in my mind, I thought that we had a public hearing. I forgot this does not require a public hearing. So I think we'll be able to vote on it next meeting. There were a couple of things that came up relevant to, A, the location near to the public safety complex. So I wanted to just get some quick input from the chiefs. As well as wanting to talk to the city engineer. And I just need to reach out to Eversource. They do not have a rep there. So I think we'll be able to meet before the next meeting, that first meeting in November and vote on this. Have a recommendation. At this time, we have two pieces of new business, one of which I will move and then I will make a brief statement. I'd like to move the South Street sidewalk easement 334 Main to the property committee for, for the discussion. That's a form of a motion.
Second.
Motion second to move the South Street sidewalk easement to the property committee. Any further discussion? Barbara.
Peg Coniff.
Yes.
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Erica Flood.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kuzinski.
Yes.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zerrit.
Yes. And as we've discussed and established, that does not require a public hearing. So hopefully we can get that at the first, at the first November meeting. Regarding new business, A, conservation restriction request from the Lathrop community. I am recusing myself from this discussion. I have a number of relationships with that organization, both in terms of a direct butter, as well as sitting on the board of Lathrop, as well as being their conservation liaison. So for all the reasons noted, I do not feel like I participate in that discussion. I did send a request to the ethics board. They haven't gotten back to me. This seems like a no brainer. So Counselor Kuzinski, do you feel comfortable introducing this item for us for property?
I certainly would be happy to make a motion if that's what we do to move it to property. I would like to move the conservation request from the Lathrop community to the property committee.
Second.
Motion second to move the Lathrop community request to the property committee. Any further discussion? Barbara.
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Erica Flood.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kuzinski.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zerrit.
abstain.
Peg Coniff.
Hi. Okay, motion passes. Could I ask Counselor Kuzinski, I'd like to sit as a voting member of your committee for that agenda item only. If needed. Because you'll only have two people voting. So if you could invite me when that agenda topic is up.
Certainly.
Thank you. Okay.
And this concludes.
Thank you. Rules in government relations.
Thank you, Madam President. I have two kind of big things. Sorry they're coming at the end of the night. I'm going to start with the one that we introduced first, which is the resolution regarding decriminalization of therapeutic psychedelic plants. The rules committee met a number of times to go over this language, talk to stakeholders from the community and as well as the sponsors of this particular measure. There was a number of amendments that were discussed. Ultimately, the committee voted 2 to 0 to recommend this resolution to the full council. Beyond that, I will pass it to Counselor Zerrit as the sort of lead sponsor on this to kind of walk through where we are and give a summary of what's going on with this resolution.
Thanks, Counselor Peak. I'm assuming that everyone's had an opportunity to review the final-ish language in the packet as well as kind of two amendments that are pretty much housekeeping, just in terms of recommending changing the actual title and a little bit of extra terminology at the end that kind of came at some of the thoughts of, from Counselor Coniff. So first of all, I just want to reiterate how much I appreciate the engaged discussion around this resolution. I certainly appreciate the enthusiastic support and advocacy from the Bay Stateers for Natural Medicine. I think we all received a lot of the email feedback from them. And obviously, the rules committee for your discussion about a really interesting topic that's quite on the cutting edge of plant-based medicine and how to address a number of issues right now that we'll get into in a second. Also, a lot of thanks to Bree Eichstey and Rebecca Edwards from the Health of Youth Coalition for a great discussion to help facilitate language that addresses the impact and concerns around our youth and adolescents on this topic. I appreciate Shelby's input earlier about that. There are some differences in terms of how we talk to those different age groups. So what does this accomplish, this resolution? It acknowledges the millennia of historical use of these plants as therapeutic and beneficial, as well as the more recent history of peer-reviewed studies that demonstrate therapeutic value and safety of these plants. It also undoes more recent historical bias, marginalization, and fabricated persecution for therapeutic uses of these plants by calling to an end to arrests and incarceration for uses described herein. It properly frames these plants as belonging somewhere other than Schedule I of the list of controlled substances. Their presence there being demonstrably inappropriate, given irrefutable scientific proof of their therapeutic value, their lack of addictive properties, and minimal to no lethal doses. So what doesn't this do? First of all, this creates a statement of intention and a request for policy. It does not create any ordinance, policy, or procedure. It does not promote use of people under 21. We made a concerted effort to partner with youth health advocates in our city to outline within the resolution ways in which our youth and community should be educated, how information should be collected, and how we can create framework for safe use and storage. It also does not promote generalized uninformed recreational use that leads to any form of criminality, such as large-scale distribution, over-intoxicated behavior, or violence. There's clear language herein to delineate between the intended dos and don'ts. This resolution is presented quite appropriately in the backdrop of a discussion we just had a few minutes ago, criminal justice reform and seeking ways to reduce unnecessarily, sometimes bias-based, and sometimes racially bias-based arrested incarcerations. I'm asking this council to consider the body of literature available that demonstrates the roles that these plants play in addressing such pathologies as PTSD, depression, anxiety, opioid and alcohol dependence, among many others, that were testified on in the public speak earlier. And as well as the notable evidence around the safety of these plants in the context of other botanicals and available pharmaceuticals. Ask yourselves if arresting people and putting them in jail for caring for themselves or others is part of the moral fabric of our governments. And as noted, this was co-sponsored with Counselors Derby and Peak. Thank you so much for all of your thoughts and input. I guess in no particular order, I wanted to give Counselor Derby a chance to speak, if that's okay, Madam President and Mr. Chair.
Sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. And thanks, Counselors there, for that thoughtful introduction. Thank you to the rules committee. You know, this, I think, is an idea whose time has come. You know, we know from historical record that the reason these substances are classified as Schedule I is because as part of the war on drugs, it was a way to control and manipulate communities, oftentimes communities of color, communities of political resistance. And it was not a appropriate way to use the law and law enforcement to gain political favor and political advantage. And anybody that knows the history knows that what I just said is very true. And, you know, I think another piece of this is that, you know, as human societies have gone throughout the years, we lived in very different situations across the world. Many of those situations were in tribal situations. And one of my thesis for my undergrad was done on the role of rites of passage and gangs in, all over the world. And one of the pieces of rites of passage ceremonies, besides showing younger people and adults how to be functional in society, oftentimes, one of the things that was accompanied with that was a peak experience through the use of different plant medicines. And it's something that humans have been doing for many, many thousands of years. And, you know, as a health teacher, I think it's important to recognize that these substances have a very low to no opportunity for people to become addicted to them. Psychedelics, plant-based psychedelics are not habit-forming. And so I think that's an important thing to say. I think as we talk about some of these substances, you know, many of them are not an overdose risk. As we get to ibogaine and other substances like that, those need to be used in a much more controlled setting. But the effectiveness for the use of opioid addiction is irrefutable and is pretty powerful. And as we all know, you know, being in the throes of an opioid crisis, what that has done to the fabric of our community and finding ways to be able to escape that powerful addiction, I think is a critical, important thing that we need to be supportive of. You know, so I, again, I think that this is an idea whose time has come. And again, this isn't, you know, binding, but it's intentional. You know, we're saying what our intent is, and I think that's important for us to say and to say it loud. Because we can do lip service to erasing, you know, institutional bias. But this is something tangible that we can put forward that will potentially make a real difference. So I just want to make sure that that is understood as well. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
I'll just say one little extra piece there, which is anyone who knows me and has been on rules with me or in rules with me knows that I'm like kind of a grump about resolutions. Because I, my question always with resolutions is what, what do we hope to accomplish with these? In this case, I feel like there is an opportunity where, where there's, there's, right now, there's a political climate where there's a real mismatch between sort of the medical and scientific understanding of the potential risks and benefits of these sorts of substances and sort of where the politics are on these things. And so I think there's, you know, we send a lot of resolutions out where I feel like a lot of the people we send them to either already agree with us or will never agree with us. And I don't know if this is true, but on this one, one of the reasons I was talked into supporting it is that I actually do think that, you know, with the limited, with the limited amount of power that we do have, just sort of pointing out that disconnect and communicating that disconnect to our representatives in the state legislature and the federal legislature. I don't know, maybe it, maybe it's, get something running in somebody's head that that this is something that maybe they want to look into a little bit more. And maybe some of the preconceptions that they had about a lot of this stuff isn't 100% right. Maybe, maybe they need to see where the science is going right now. And it's within that context that I co-sponsored this. It's not, it's not, we're not decriminalizing anything because we don't have the power to decriminalize anything because city councils don't set drug policy. But what we can do is say to the folks who actually might have some power on these matters, hey, look, we're a body that, you know, was elected by our community and who deeply cares about our community. And we see people in our community who benefit from these things that are currently illegal. And, and isn't that something that perhaps we should reconsider? Isn't this, isn't this a place where maybe those of us who do have a position, an ability to change the stuff should maybe take a moment to reflect on that? So I just want to say that with, with the context of this, like, you know, we say, well, why even do this? We don't have, we don't have the power to decriminalize drugs. Like, well, of course we don't. But I do think that, you know, right now, when there is this big window between what's politically acceptable to talk about with this stuff and what the scientific community is saying about it, it is incumbent, I think, on people like us to, just to note that and to note that in a way that, that hopefully others will take note of. And that's all that I have to say about this.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Peak, Derby, and Zerrit. Appreciate that. Can I make a comment? May I?
Of course, Madam President.
May I have the floor? You know, I've talked about it before that I have family members who are mentally ill. And, and I find, you know, that, that our country, I hope someday, I'll live to see this country fully value the mentally ill as full and whole humans deserving of all the things that the rest of us get. And to your point, I don't believe, you know, obviously, we don't have the power to do that. But what we can do is tell our, our state representatives and our local neighbors that we value them. This is important for us as an organization, as an elected body, that we support and are trying to support folks who have addictions and mental illness. And to your point, Counselor Peak, a lot of these things are often very kind of shows of, of look at us, we're great, and how awesome are we with a resolution? And it doesn't have any binding. But I think this one, to your point, hits really close to home. And it tells our community that we care about them and that we do know that they are full and whole human beings and that they deserve the same kind of support as we would have for any other thing and that, that we need to show both locally and federally and at the state level that this is what we believe in, this is how we want to operate as a human race and as a local community. So I thank you guys for bringing this forward, Counselors there, Derby, and Peak. I think this is really important. And for my family, I thank you. Anything else? Counsel Rist.
Yeah, I just wanted to say the reason that the rules committee voted 2 to 0 was I was unable to attend the meeting in which this was thoroughly discussed even further. There's no secret that I was opposed to the original resolution because I was concerned about its possible misuse of these plants for recreational use. But I have been educated and I've come to the conclusion that the therapeutic value is, of course, there. I don't know where I would have gone had I been able to attend the meeting, but I will abstain this evening because it's not fair of me to make a vote either way without being fully involved at the committee level. And I was not. And I want to say to those that are concerned about how I operate that I always want to hear a lot of discussion in open meeting where everything is open to the public and transparent. And I'm not really sure I like the lobbying that goes on behind the scenes between peoples. Sometimes it happens, but I like to, I like to be involved in open meeting. And because I was not, I will abstain this evening. And I do appreciate the hard work of the counselors that put this forward. I just don't know where I would have ended up, but I wasn't able to attend and I apologize for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments? Counselor Derby, or who is making, who's making the motion? Counselor? Oh, sorry, Counsel Rothschild.
I, I fully support this resolution and I wanted to thank the Bay Stateers for all their activism, organization, education. I think this shows that when, this is showing kind of democracy working in a way that when people come forth and are organized and, and make their case that it is not binding, but we are lifting those voices. So I'm, I'm happy to vote on this. And I'm, thank you to my counselors, fellow counselors Salem, Owen, and Tom Peak who worked on this. I, I also, for my family, you know, my father suffered from pancreatic cancer. And in order to get treatments for him, in that case, it was cannabis. But at that time, the legality was still not full. And I just know what it's like when you're suffering and, and you can't get something that's going to help you. And I, so many people. you. And, and I, so many people have come to our meetings and came and educated me on the side too, just sharing their stories and made themselves vulnerable. These aren't easy stories to share. But I believe that people put their stories forward to help others. And I'm happy to vote in favor of this resolution this evening. Thank you.
Counselor Zaret?
Just really quickly, shoot, forgot my train of thought. Oh, just really how exciting this is. I mean, what we're doing here, what we're voting on here is really cutting-edge medicine. We're undoing some incredible harms that have been done to this country in terms of what I've talked a lot about during these proceedings, which is this, and Counselor Derby just touched upon again, this, the artificial system of drug prohibition. And that's not to say that there aren't, there aren't items or substances on the current list of schedule on drugs that absolutely belong there. But, I mean, certainly for me, for a long time, as a cannabis advocate, and then more recently, during some graduate schoolwork I did, where I focused primarily on the, the use of cannabinoids as a replacement for opioids, as well as then diving into kind of the, the legal framework in terms of some work I did with cannabis regulation recently. This just came across to me, kind of in terms of what the universe offered me at the perfect time, because I'd had all that information fresh on my mind. And it seemed like a logical extension. And, and reading some of the research that I was really vaguely familiar with, beginning to dive into that as a medical provider, and certainly as an advocate for plant-based medicines, it's really fascinating. And I do really hope that what seemed to be happening, and that East Hampton is really lucky, I think, to be on the cutting edge of, is that this whole topic, we saw it already in Portland. I mean, this is, this is, this is the start of a movement. And I think this is going to be, you know, to someone earlier who kind of spoke about the pharmaceutical industrial complex, you know, this is an exciting opportunity, hopefully done properly with a good legal framework that doesn't kind of abuse the powers of these plants and take them for the sake of pharmaceutical companies' greed, but gives them to healers, whether that be allopathic healers, or, you know, other guides, we heard Misha speak earlier. I think we're seeing the dawn of something really wonderful happening, especially as it, as it relates to the opioid crisis and many other topics. I appreciate everyone sharing their personal story here. And I wanted to particularly thank Counselor Rist, because I know this was a tough topic for him. And, you know, seeing kind of more of the, the classical kind of criminal side of this in terms of law enforcement, and being able to hear his words tonight, and kind of unwind his mind a little bit, you know, in terms of understanding that there's a therapeutic side to this, and being able to understand how we compartmentalize that. So, so thank you.
Okay. So are we ready to read the resolution? And, oh, sorry, I see.
Seconds from a clean getaway. Counselor Kuzinski.
Sorry, just can't let that happen tonight. I guess, hearing from folks with their individual personal stories is very moving. Counselor Coniff, I do appreciate what you've, you've added to the conversation this evening. I appreciate all the work that everyone has done. I'll be very brief, and just wanted to say that I believe that all treatment options be available, and that we keep a wide and open and expansive set of ways for people to be healed. And, and I think that having the legislature look carefully, with a full and fair consideration, sooner rather than later, on these matters, will open up the discussion in a very important way. And I would like to add my voice to encourage that happening. So I will be voting yes.
Thank you. Counselor Pete, quick, make the motion.
So wait, do we need to, do we need to read it, or can we just, it's in the packet? Like, how should we do this?
Do, does the counselors want this read into the record? Counselor Rist?
It's already in the record, being that's been in the packet. And I don't believe it's necessary. So unless the counselor wants, any other counselors want it read, I don't believe it's necessary. Everybody's had a chance to read the final version, so I don't feel it's necessary.
Fair enough. Then it would be, oh, sorry, Barbara, see.
Sorry. I, I just want to make sure that I know, I just, this is like the four-page one, right? Because they look pretty similar, and I just want to make sure that I know which one you're voting on.
And, and does the version we have include the two changes that Counselor Zaret sent? So we have to make a motion such that these amendments are incorporated into whatever version we vote on.
So we, I'd make a motion to recommend the, or to, was recommend the right word? I'd make a motion to recommend the resolution, and then someone would make a motion to amend the resolution to account for those things. And then we, does that, does that sound good?
I'm not clear on that, because I have two that look very similar. And I think I know which is the most recent one. And are there amendments in there? Or will there be amendments added?
I'm going to have to defer to Counselors Zaret on the fine points here.
Yeah.
I think the final language, including recommendation for two amendments, is in the October 6th packet. That's what I believe is the final language. It contains basically the, the resolution as it emerged from rules. And then there's recommendations for two amendments that I would probably, once the motion's made seconded, I would probably make a motion to accept both of those amendments, just for clarity of my, my plan. So that, that final language is there. I'm not, Barbara, where are you seeing two different versions?
Well, you, you had sent a first one, it's dated June 2nd. But the second one is also dated June 2nd.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I apologize. So we should have had some clarity of that prior, and I apologize at my, my oversight. Yeah, so that should be today. I could have made it, I could, I'm happy to make an amendment to that, if you'd like me to do that.
No, I, I don't think you really need to make an amendment. I think you just need to be like, clear, clear on which version you're talking about. If you're talking about one that was included in the October 6th packet, and it's what you want, everything's in there, then, I mean, I think we can just do that. I mean, if you want to read the whole thing, just so it's totally clear, it's pretty long.
Yeah. And, and could I just make one request, Counselor Pete, that rather than recommend you use the verb express support for?
Okay, sure. I also see Counselor Kuzinski's hand.
Counselor Kuzinski.
I was just going to make a recommendation, for whatever it's worth, to say that since there seems to be some confusion about which, which version we're talking about, and rather than read the entire version, is it possible that someone could put the version we're voting on up on the screen, run it through each page quickly, so that we're all clear, and everyone has a full understanding that this is the version we're talking about?
I have October 6th up, if you want me to do that.
Go ahead.
Give me a second.
I feel like in all this time, we could have just read the thing.
Yeah, I think, I think in the future, if you're going to revise something, you need to put a revision date on it, so it's clear. That's just my opinion.
It was an oversight. You're correct. I apologize.
Fine opinion, Barbara. How you doing, Dan?
You're on.
You're on mute.
You're still on mute. You're on mute, still on mute. There you go. Oh, back to mute.
I'm sorry. I'm, I've got to get rid of other things, so that I don't have so many things on my. I don't know why. Oh, there it is. Sorry.
We're not going anywhere.
There it is. Does everybody see it now?
Yes.
It does say June 2nd, but this is in the October 6th packet. And I believe it's what you're requesting. So how do you want me to proceed here? Just kind of scroll through it as we go on? Okay.
If that was in the packet, and this is the version that the three counselors agree is the final version, absent the two amendments, Counselor Zaret, that you're going to add at the end, if you guys agree, this is the version we're voting on, then this is the version we're voting on.
Okay.
It's in the packet. We all should have read it.
Then I will make a motion to express support for this resolution, as it appears on this screen, and in our October 6th packet.
Second.
Motion is second, to express support for the resolution to decriminalize, I know we're going to change the title, controlled substance possession, as well as cultivation and distribution. Any further discussion? Counselor Zaret?
I may surprise you, but I'd like to make a motion to amend the language that we see on the screen, and that appears in the October 6th packet, to include the following two amendments. If, is it okay, President Coniff, if I make them both?
Yes.
One, okay. Two amendments, one, amend the title to read, "A Resolution Protecting Adult Access to Plant Medicines and Prioritizing Public Health Responses to Controlled Substances, Substance Possession." And a second amendment, to amend the paragraph that begins, "Be it further resolved that the East Hampton City Council supports state and local legislation to study the therapeutic properties of entheogenic plants." And then to add, "Under the direction of a knowledgeable, trained, and experienced provider, or via self-administration, under the appropriate guidance and education," and to the end of that current paragraph.
Second.
Motion is second, for the amendments just given. Any discussion on the amendments? Is your hand just up, Counselor Zaret, for no reason? Okay, good. Anyone, so, any further discussion on the amendments? Barbara?
Okay, first, Owen, you will email those to me.
I think those are in the.
Immediate.
Are they not? No, not in the packet?
They're in the packet, but I will happily email them to you.
Okay.
In the October 6th packet?
Yes.
Okay, okay. If that's the case, then I'll, okay.
A second.
Okay, Erica Flood.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
For personal reasons, I'm going to abstain.
Omar Gomez?
He abstained.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. JP Kuzinski?
Hi.
Tom Peak?
Hi.
Dan Rist?
Abstain.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Hi.
Salem Derby?
Hi.
Okay, so the amendment passes, and now we still have the motion for the full resolution on the table. Any discussion, any further discussion? Barbara?
Omar Gomez?
Abstain.
JP Kuzinski?
Hi.
Tom Peak?
Hi.
Dan Rist?
Abstain.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Hi.
Salem Derby?
Hi.
Erica Flood?
Hi.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Pete.
Thanks, everyone. I have another big thing, so sorry. But we've got a new precinct map. And so a lot of you were at the two meetings we held about this. But for folks who might have not been able to attend, we looked at the proposed precinct map, and there was, in general, a movement towards using more geographical boundaries, particularly bodies of water, rather than sort of arbitrary streets, in the hope of making neighborhood, like, making for more coherent, intuitive districts. When we got it, myself and a couple other people had sort of asked whether it might be possible to further shift the boundaries in order to further adhere to that principle, that, for instance, basically, what, what I was really hoping to reduce, and I think I speak for the other folks who spoke in favor of this, is the number of particularly core downtown neighborhoods that are sort of split, be between multiple precincts. And, and, and to have those adhere more to things like, you know, the rivers and the ponds, that sort of shape the way that the city was built, and the way that things, the way that we interact with our spaces. To that end, the folks at the Secretary of the Commonwealth's Office were nice enough to redraw an alternative map, which is the one that the council voted to recommend to the full council, three to zero. So just to show a couple, when I'm talking about natural boundaries, a few examples of this, precinct two, like, so the Everett Street neighborhood, for a long time, Everett Street started in precinct two, and then went into precinct three, and then went back into precinct two. Now, it's, you know, it's pretty clearly defined by the brook, but that precinct three goes up to Lower Mill Pond. And that whole neighborhood is, is part of precinct three. Likewise, in, on Pleasant Street, it used to be that everything north of Pleasant Street, and all those neighborhoods on the other side of the Mills, Pleasant Green, Arlington, Terrace View, and all that, Berkeley, those were all in precinct one, despite the fact that to actually reach the rest of precinct one, you'd have to trudge across a river. And despite the fact that, I think that those neighborhoods, to me, feel much more tied in with the rest of Pleasant Street and the Mills, and to some extent, on, you know, the, the new city neighborhood, in terms of just the architecture, and the, you know, the, the sort of, like, proximity to things. I just felt like that was the thing. So now precinct two reaches up to the Manhan River, and includes that neighborhood. As a result of that, precinct one now reaches down to some of the areas around the Oxbow, which creates, here's the thing, it looks, this map now looks a lot more neat and clean in the downtown, but there's now some weird, confusing split streets on the outskirts, particularly with East Street and Hendrick Street. Nothing's perfect. To me, this is a preferable option. And the Rules Committee concurred and voted on this three to zero. So I, unless there's any discussion, I think I'm prepared to make a motion to accept this map as it was amended.
Hold it. Barb?
Can I just make another, a couple other comments about the other precincts that you didn't kind of mention? First, if you can scroll down, I would want to say that precinct five is seeing no changes at all. There's no changes at all. There were going to be a few changes, but now that precinct is exactly the same. Precinct four, it, this, the change up here with the Williston campus, and the majority of Williston campus is now in precinct two. It was split more between four and two, but the majority, it, it is, it's all mostly in precinct two, except for the other side of Main Street. The, the West Street line that follows the Manhan River, the line up till now was West Street, but prior to 10 years ago, it was exactly what it is right now. So West Street, which has been split between one and four for the past 10 years, will now all be back in one, just like it was 10 years ago. These numbers are all based on the 2020 census, and the goal is for no precinct to have more than 4,000 people, not registered voters, people. So that's the state, they, they can look at the block level, which you all received the block breakdown. And so, you know, move, making moves is not as simple as just changing a line. They, you have to look deeper into the data to get to the blocks. And that's why precinct one is so big. It looks like, wow, it looks so big. But the density of that area is, is less than the downtown, which is.
But the density of that area is, is less than the downtown, which is denser with more people. Precinct two has always been a kind of strangely shaped precinct, al- always. It's always had kind of a weird shape. Another thing that's happening in precinct two is that 15 Cottage Street has always been in precinct two. So now all of Cottage Street is in the same precinct. Whereas up, you know, right now, 15 Cottage Street is in precinct two and the rest is in precinct three. So. Okay. Thank you, Barbara. I was going to ask you if you could give us the finer details. What, what was the ultimate change in our census?
Dan, if you could, I think our number before was 16053.
Okay, and it looks like it's 16 to 11 now?
Correct.
Okay. Not much.
Not much.
Okay. Any, any questions from anyone before Tom makes a, a motion?
Oh, and let me just clarify what you're doing tonight. What you're doing tonight is you're approving this map, but not only the map, you're also improving the legal description, which was prepared mostly by the state with me adding the tweaks for the, most of the water boundaries. And then once you approve it, then it will go back to the state and there's the local election review committee. They have to review all of the, the revised precinct maps and they will vote to approve what you're approving tonight. And then this map will go into effect at the end, December 31st. It will be good for 10 years. In the past, everybody that has had a change of precinct needed to be notified of that change. And I'm sure that, you know, we'll be hearing more information about how that works.
Counselor Flood?
All that being said, can we just confirm this does not affect this election cycle? Just for the public, this timeline is not, there's no confusion here. You're in the same precinct for this particular election cycle.
You are correct.
Thank you.
Good point. Thank you for bringing that up, Counselor Flood. Okay. Counselor Pete?
Okay. I will make a motion to accept this new precinct map as well as the legal descrip, the accompanying legal description.
Second.
Motion is second to accept the new boundaries for our precincts. Any further discussion? Counselor Gomez?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to take a minute, yes, because I think my prison is the biggest one in the change. And I just want to say that it's a huge possibility they're going to abstain because I don't want to send a message to the constituents, both, one that I don't represent the one and that I'm happy not to represent the other ones. It's, it's a huge change in my prison. And I will, I'm more than happy, I'm more than willing to represent everybody in the community. And just for those reasons, I'm going to abstain because I think when we are talking about confusion, we see confusion in just a few areas in the city, but no, in other areas on the city. When we divide streets, we divide streets and because it looks better. And the other side of the street, we don't divide it, we don't take the whole street because it's, it's impossible to do, right? But for those reasons, I'm, I've been abstaining.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Gomez. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Do we not on the floor?
We do.
Okay. Any further discussion? Barbara?
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Abstain.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you, and thus concludes.
So we don't have another meeting planned for anything yet?
No, we have one item left on our agenda, but it's this, let me actually see, do we need a, oh, you know what? I really need to, actually, could I request a 90-day extension on the Rule 20 proposal?
Motion is second to extend a 90 days for the Rule 20 agenda item. Any further discussion?
I'll just, as, as a little bit of context for that, the Rule 20 is setting council rules about the expectations of the council when we move back to in-person meetings and the expectations for us to facilitate remote participation. But there's a lot of moving pieces right now in the IT department and the mayor's office. And there's just like, I think there's a lot that we perhaps were, we moved, we, it seemed like things were moving very fast. So we introduced this and then things slowed down. And so at some point, we're going to have all the information we need to make sensible policy on that. And in the meantime, I'm just kind of going to keep punting on it. So, yeah, just figured for context, that's what I'm thinking about.
Okay. Motion is second to extend it. Barbara?
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Hey, motion passes.
And thus concludes.
Great. Thank you, Counselor Pete. Ad hoc committees, did we, okay, so ad hoc committees, anything on ranked choice voting, Counselor Pete?
You should have all received a mailer. That was the subject of our hard work. We're done meeting until after the election. We're going to have a post-mortem just to sort of look over the data, see how things went, see if there's anything in that we think we should be talking about for future improvements, and then we'll likely disman, disband the committee.
Okay. You have until February 5th, 2022.
Cool. Barbara, has her hand.
Barbara? I just want to make a clarification of that flyer. We, we had one little line on there that should have been clarified a little differently. I just want to put it out to everyone and if, in order to be mailed a ballot for the election, you have to put in a request in writing. You can't just call my office and ask for it. It has to be a request in writing. You can use the application on the website or you can just write a letter, but it has to be signed. It has to be in writing. We're getting a lot of calls from people that think they can just call and ask for a ballot and that's not the case. So I just want to clarify that in case anybody's listening.
At this point, who knows? Okay, sounds good. So we'll just leave that on here for now. Okay, senior tax workoff, Counselor Kozinski.
No, nothing new to report this evening, Madam President. Thank you.
Okay. Ordnance review, Counselor, oh, sorry, Barbara?
I'm, I have one really positive thing to say about the senior tax workoff program. We have, we have a senior tax workoff person who has been working on the bike path. And I have to say she is amazing and has, we really wanted somebody who was going to be a worker. And, I mean, she's been out on the mower, blowing leaves, she's been, you know, trimming bushes and brush and picking up trash and taking down signs that aren't supposed to be there. So I have to say that for our purposes on the bike path, we are, I, I'm not going to say her name because she knows who she is, but she has been absolutely wonderful. So I want to say thank you.
Oh, that's awesome. That's great to hear. Thank you, Barb. Ordnance review committee, Counselor Rothschild.
Um, I think that our work is done. So what do we, do we?
You can, we can vote to have this ad hoc committee shut down.
Okay. Do I make a motion for that?
Please.
I'd like to make a motion to officially end the work of the ordinance review committee and thank all the committee members for their work.
Motion is second to conclude the business of the ordinance review committee and disband that committee. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Yes, and thank you to the committee. Sorry.
So Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. I think we've done old and new business and the Red Sox are losing, so I'll take a motion. Oh, Counselor.
Madam President, I.
The Red Sox are not losing?
No, I didn't move our piece of new business to ordinance. So I, I would.
Which new business?
I, I believe that we have a plastic piece that is under new business.
It's already on your agenda.
You don't have to do it again because it's already in there.
It's just FYI for us. So we're good.
We already voted on that, Counselor Derby.
All right.
Second.
All right, motion to adjourn. Second, Barbara?
Lindsay Rothschild?
Yes.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Okay, Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Yes.
Erica Flood?
Yes.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Okay, thanks, guys. See you later.
Erica, it's not your fault.
You're going to go to your man.
It's not your fault.